Okay, well, call the order. The August 12th, 2024, regular meeting of the East Bethel Minnesota City Council. Please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite in its essence.
Thank you. We don't have anything under the, well, first thing is to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next thing on the agenda is presentations and public hearings. We don't have anything scheduled. But if I could, I just would like to make one announcement for the record. And that is recently we dedicated a new playground facility up at the Coon Lake Community Center, Community and Senior Center. And I want to thank Nate Ashford, who's our Director of Public Works, and his team for making that playground as good-looking as I've ever seen it in 28 and a half years. And the new equipment is great. And it was really well received by the community. And just on behalf of the people who live down there, just want to say thanks for the very good effort. The next item is the public forum. And I'm probably going to butcher your name, but it's James Rubal?
Uh, Rubal.
Rubal, okay. Well, I'm surprised I got that close. Come on up. If you can restate your name and address.
Very good. My name is James Rubal II. That's R-O-U-B-A-L. I live at 19245 Greenbrook Drive, longtime resident of East Bethel. I just want to mention, I appreciate the efforts this council has put forth for the residents and the fact that you brought back the public forum for the residents to come in and speak directly to the council. I have a question I hope you can answer for me today. I was looking for a place to hold a family reunion, and it was suggested that I might be able to hold this at one of our local parks or rent out one of our community centers. I was checking out a few locations when I came across this. I have a picture I want to show you guys. Can I hand it out to each one of you guys?
Thanks, bud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my question is, the community center at West Breen Prines Aspen has a business sign right in front, right in the front. In fact, I drove by it for the first time because of this. Does the city own this? If so, why is there a business sign for a private company out front? And how long has this business been there? Is the city renting this out? And how much does it cost to rent space? I have a business and I'm curious. It obviously includes lawn service because the city crew was cutting grass the day I drove by. I am concerned that a city-owned building is being used for other reasons than it actually was intended and that my tax dollars may be, in this case, being misused. So. That's it.
Okay. Anybody want to respond? Or it's not necessary for us to respond. It's necessary for us to listen.
Okay.
We don't have to actually respond. But does anybody want to respond? Well, if not, then thank you for
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Bringing it to our attention.
All right, thanks for listening.
Well, can somebody, I mean, is it a city building? Is it a private building?
Well, it's a city-owned building.
What is it? Is what he wants to know?
Yeah, well, it is a city-owned building.
Mr. Mayor, as I understand, there's a contract from years ago that was written. I don't know if this building was given to the city with an understanding of usage. I do have the contract, but I don't have it at my disposal right now. And there is some agreements that the city had made in the past. And I'm not sure how that plays out going into the future. But I, you know, I know that, I think there was a Firebird LLC, I think initially the contract was, and I think the name's changed. And then it's, as I understand, still under contract at this point, so.
If
Since when?
If the resident would like, he wants to make an appointment, I'd be more than happy to share the contract with him. It's public record. He can read through it himself. And then we can try and answer any questions based on that. None of us were obviously around when the contract was written. So we can only answer to the best of what we can glean out of what's on paper, so. But if you want to grab my card on the way out, I can certainly, Aaron, I'm the Community Development Director.
Okay, yeah, good to touch it up.
Yes.
Thank you.
That might be the best way to try and answer.
Yeah, it's a good starting point anyway, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, we'll
I can be involved with that if you want to help you through any of this. You know, in your situation, we want to figure out stuff. I'll be willing to help you.
You talking to me?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Jim. I appreciate that.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, if there's
I grab your card. You have a card, I'll turn it to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, he does.
Supposed to.
Okay. So if there's nothing else, no one else on the list has signed up? So we'll close the public forum. So we move into the consent agenda. And so I don't know what is the matter with me, but it's like, we'd have to have a meeting every night for me to remember this, it seems like. But I think we approved the consent agenda. And then we actually, we approved discussion of the consent agenda. And then we go into it and we poll stuff.
Yeah.
Am I saying that right?
Mayor, there's really no right way or wrong way. What you have done
No wonder I can't figure it out.
So
There is no right or wrong.
So at the end of the day, what you have been doing is you've been moving the consent agenda, seconding it. And then you've allowed people to poll. And then you get a vote of those remaining items. And then you've gone through those individual items that have been polled.
Okay. That's kind of sort of how I remember it. Okay, so who wants to make a motion on the consent agenda?
Make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion's made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
I'd like to poll items A, C, and G.
A, C, and G.
I'll pull A also.
I want to pull item B. Anything else need to be pulled? So we got A, B, C, G, correct?
Those are polled. And then remaining is D, E, and F.
Okay. So for item A, Brian?
We have to vote.
You can vote on those that remain on the consent and then have a discussion on those that are polled.
Okay, all those. So we have a motion. We have a second. So you want to approve the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard. So item A.
My question isn't about anything in particular on the bill list. It's been brought out in the news under investigation that the city of Blaine was defrauded of, I think, $1.2 million by a wire fund transfer. And it's been an active investigation since then. So with that coming to light, what practices do we have to make sure that the city isn't defrauded in any way?
Arben, Connor.
Yeah, it's not necessarily a question that could be answered tonight, but
Was it an IT system thing that, like Metro Inet would?
It was a wire transfer that however, when you do a wire transfer, you have to send it to a certain location. Somehow.
Was it a staff member involved in it?
I don't know how it happened in Blaine.
I know. I have the first
Usually a defrauder will somehow get the different
Routing numbers and whatever.
Sending routing numbers in there somehow. And it's not the first time that this has happened. I think two or three years ago, it happened to a couple real estate mortgage companies. Edine Realty being one of them. In one day, I think, three house sales, the proceeds were wired out to go to another bank. And they were lost. That somehow the new instructions came in and the people thought it was legit. And they sent the money out to the new instructions. And it was gone. And two of those real estate companies did, or mortgage companies, did not warranty that. But Edine Realty did. They honored that. But that's just one example of
Seems like you might want to have, we might want to have Mike Bezorsky as the Financial Director come before the city council on a next meeting and kind of let us know what
Mr. Mayor, we do have policies in place for this. But what I will tell you is the county was even, you know, at risk. A lot of these people that put together invoices look identical to, you know, some of the others.
Yeah, they're professionals.
They're absolutely professionals, what they do. We have multiple eyes look at and signatures on the bills that come through. A lot of them have, you'll see on here, a lot of them have the receipts, you know, that go with them. So and we are covered, I will say, by insurance on this sort of issue as well. I think Blaine was covered as well on that. Doesn't mean your insurance rates don't go up.
Is that another league of Minnesota cities?
Right.
Do?
Yeah, I trust. And so it is something that is, every community's at risk on this one.
It seems rather incumbent upon the banking institutions themselves to verify a SWIFT number or whatever routing number is legit or not, you know, associated with the name and all that.
Well, you get good head, or you'll get the number that's sweeter.
It could be the difference between an INC. and an LLC. You know, same name. And just
Got to be identical.
We did talk about this at the last staff meeting a week ago. And Mike stated that we maintain paper invoices and paper checks. And that is the best way to thwart any electronic payments going to the wrong place. Because we don't use electronic payments. We use a paper check.
Retaining paper ballots, isn't it?
So, but I mean, certainly he can come in and answer to that. But that was our conversation last Tuesday as well, so.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that the city has safeguards. Seems all happen in one city. Want to make sure East Bethel is not at risk as well.
Mike doesn't get excited about very much, but he got excited about that one.
Yeah, I'll bet. Yeah. Oh, yeah, he lives in Blaine.
As a resident, his property tax went to that offshore company somewhere. So, yeah.
Okay, so does that satisfy Hector Lee?
Yeah. So
All right.
Jim, you had a question on A?
Yeah, I got A here. I just got some questions, Matt, on arena operations. Because like now is the off-season, correct? So we're really not doing much there, are we?
We're actually, I believe that Nate indicated we're going to be creating, you know, making ice here pretty soon, if not already.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Because I'm just curious, because like for electric, 58173, I'm just
So, yeah, based on that, then my assumption is that, that in fact, they are making ice already then, based on that size of an electrical bill.
And also like for refuse removal, $282. I mean, how much garbage can you get if nobody's there, really? Or is that
Yeah, generally speaking, that's what you pay for with a, you know, half a yard container or whatever. And
So no matter what's in it, you still got to pay that much.
Right. Very similar to at home. You're on vacation for the week and you didn't generate any garbage. You're still paying the garbage fee.
Okay, I got you. Okay, under Finance on page five, Metropolitan Council, $3,185.
Neeper.
SAC remittance?
Yep.
What is that? I'm just curious, because usually it falls underneath sewer and stuff, doesn't it?
Well, that's, those are the fees that are collected for the Metropolitan Council, for the SAC fee, sewer access charge fee. And then we just, it's where it pass through for that.
Okay, because I, page seven, then we have Metropolitan Council for $6,071.
Is that, is that for the
You're going to see a lot of them because Ellevage is coming in. And every one of those units has a significant SAC connection. For sewer, yep. So then, built in, built into the permit fee is the SAC fee with overage, obviously. And then we get billed from the Met Council. We pay out from what we took in on the application.
Okay, I got you.
Just to
I just seen two different places and I'm like, wait a minute.
You're going to see a lot of them in the next couple of months.
Okay.
You're not being generous.
Oh, yeah, I was going to say, knock that off. Okay, thanks. That's all I got. Anybody else? I'll make a motion to approve item A on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard. I pulled item B. That's the work meeting minutes, very minor things. But just reading it or speaking it into the record for this, so they can make the changes. And on packet page number for the number, packet page number 13, line one, and that's in the July 22nd, 2024 work meeting minutes, correct what is in there right now from "it did not good" to "it was not good." And the second correction is in the same packet, this packet, the packet for this meeting. Packet page 15, line 17, correct it from quote "lots in applied subdivision" unquote to quote "lots in a platted subdivision" unquote. And with that, move, I'll motion that we approve item B. Unless somebody else had item B?
I'm second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor of approving item B of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard. Brian, I think you pulled C too, didn't you?
Yes.
Is it for air exchanges?
I can add those in there, but
If you want to cover it, that's fine.
Yep, page 22 of our packet, discussing the variance for 23558 Ulysses. It looks like some of the discussion is missing. And there's some confusion about motions here. I believe I did make the motion to approve the variance, I think.
No, actually I did. Yeah, I think you seconded it, but I made the motion.
Okay, because you got, you have the motion to open it up for discussion. But we don't have a motion for approving the variance in here.
Well, that's, you know, that's the problem with some of these minutes is whoever transcribes them is, almost like they're putting in what the words that they interpreted as and not verbatim what's being said.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we do not pay for verbatim. We pay for kind of the generalized
But this is a good example of why
Verbatim, verbatim is significantly more expensive.
He made the motion. It's all right. We all voted on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there is a motion in here for approving the variance. So I'm wondering if staff could
So, yeah, Mr. Mayor and council members, generally speaking, if you make a motion to get it on the table for discussion comes with that. And that's the motion that you can vote on, you know, being that it's on the table.
And that's the discussion we had that night.
If that's your understanding.
Yeah, but Councilmember DeRoche, even if he used the words "open this up for discussion", what he was doing, he was motioning the action item.
Yeah.
And then Councilmember Mundell seconded it, which of course opens it up for discussion. So it's, it's, it's another way of saying the same thing. So there was a legitimate motion, a legitimate second. There was legitimate discussion. There was an amendment that was voted on. And then the major motion was voted on. So I do agree with Councilmember Mundell. It is confusing, but at the end of the day, as I listened very carefully at that time, the council did it right.
Okay, well, if you have no qualms with the minutes as they are on this subject item, then I'm comfortable with it.
I appreciate it, Councilmember Mundell, because I agree. Even the summary is confusing. But at the end of the day, if anyone was to drill deeper, they would understand. The council appropriately moved on this action item.
Yeah.
In other words, it doesn't need to be changed. But you could if you wanted to, but it doesn't need to be.
Okay, I just, if you're comfortable with it, then I'll go with it. And so unless there's any other changes, I will make a motion to approve these minutes with the changes that the city attorney has made on pages 19
Of the packet, yeah.
And 21 of the packet as it was submitted to council.
Oh, sure.
And council will provide those to the city administrator to give to the
Do you have a copy of them, Aaron?
Mayor, council members, I have provided a copy to the city administrator as well as Community Development Director, so that it can be entered into the record as corrected.
Good deal. Okay, Mr. Mundell's made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve item C, the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard. And I believe you pulled item G too, right, Brian?
Yes. I was wondering more about this. This is ask for $5,000 to attend a conference in Philadelphia for
Pittsburgh.
Pittsburgh? For the city administrator?
Actually, that's why I wanted to pull this, was so that Matt could explain more about it for all of you.
So Mayor and Council, the IMCA stands for the International City County Management Association. They offer membership, professional development programs, research, publications, data information, technical assistance, and training to thousands of city, town, and county chief administrator officers. And the the one reason why I'm contemplating the importance of this is two administrators came up to me at a local government officials meeting and said, "You absolutely need to go to these, at least for the first couple of years." After a while, they kind of, you know, you learn what you learned and they become less productive. But kind of going over some of the agenda, there's some legal issues. There's teamwork issues. There's, when I say issues, I mean presentations, classes you can attend. And I think it would be a, you know, from my experience, after 18 years in this business, I have a way of doing things, but there's other ways of doing things too. And kind of learning those, maybe better, more efficient ways of conducting city business might be beneficial. So that's kind of the deal. It is a not to exceed 5,000. I know that that's just a place setter. I think it'll be significantly less than that, so. My hope is it will be. It depends on what the airfare ultimately comes in at when approval is, you know, granted, if it's granted, so.
And I Matt and I talked about it. He had called me. And my experience, you know, a couple centuries ago when I was a working stiff and went to conferences and all that kind of stuff, it was not only what you learn in the conference sessions, but I found more importantly was the contacts you made at conferences were much more valuable than the content in most cases. But at least to check it out a first time and at least have a firsthand experience of how valuable it is, I think is worth the expenditure. That's my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, I will also say that a lot of what they do is continuing education credit. I do not need continuing education credit, but I can say that classes that offer continuing education credit are not fly-by-night. I mean, they have to meet a certain criteria as far as information and quality of information goes. And so I have, having never gone to one of these before, I'm assuming it's going to be a productive, productive deal. And if it isn't, certainly I wouldn't, wouldn't dream of wasting money going to it again.
And we'll expect a complete report when you get back about how wonderful it was.
I can do that, but I don't know that
Or how you'll never go to another one.
Pittsburgh's going to be a great place to go to, but we'll see.
Now, if it was Maui, I could understand some more concerns, but Pittsburgh, yeah. Does that cover it for you?
Yeah, I guess it's just kind of I guess it's just kind of surprising to see a $5,000 expenditure on it.
At the outside, yeah. Yeah. But it's a five-day, four-night deal. Leave Monday morning, get back Friday night.
Hotels around $200 a night. Airfare, I'm estimating around 500. The cost is 1763 for the conference itself.
It'll probably come in about 3,500 to 4,000, more than likely.
Yes, the food, there's food included in a lot of this. So I'm hoping, you know, hoping that we'll be able to find those venues as opposed to having to, you know, go out for food, but
Yeah, well, I hope it's valuable. Anyone want to, anyone want to make the motion that we approve this agenda item?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second? Motion made and seconded to approve. Mr. Look attending this conference, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guess nobody opposed it.
Thank you.
So that completes the consent agenda. Next is new business. And under the Planning Commission, Mr. Aaron Berg is going to take center court. And we've got some variances to discuss, huh?
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On June 12th, 2024, the city received a variance application from John Stewart, the owner of 20738 Tyler Street Northeast to reduce the rear yard setback on his property from 10 feet to 5 feet for the placement of a detached accessory building. Stewart's property is located in a single-family R1 residential zoning district in the Hidden Haven Country Club Development, where accessory structures are in approved use in an R1 zoning district. The property is recorded at .87 acres and would be permitted one detached accessory structure at a maximum square footage of 1,100 square feet by the East Bethel zoning code. Documents on file with the city show that the well is located in the front yard and the septic system is located in the southwest corner of the rear yard. All properties in the Hidden Haven Country Club estates have a platted drainage and utility easement on all lines of the perimeter of the property. For maintenance, drainage, and utility placement factors, the city does not typically permit the placement of structures in drainage and utility easements. Stewart's property has a 10-foot easement along the rear property line, which overlaps and matches the 10-foot rear yard setback required by city ordinance. In order to reduce the setback, a variance would be required. To hear requests for variances from the literal provisions of the ordinance in instances where their strict enforcement would cause practical difficulties because of the circumstances unique to the individual property under consideration, and to grant such variances only when it is demonstrated that such actions will be in keeping with the spirit or intent of the ordinance. Practical difficulties as used in connection with granting of a variance means that the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted under an official control. The plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the landowner himself. And the variance, if granted, would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Economic considerations alone do not constitute a Economic considerations alone do not constitute a practical difficulty. To consider, the consideration of a variance requires that three factor practical test for difficulties. The first factor is a test of reasonableness, which means that the landowner would likely use the property in a practical way, but cannot do so under the rules of your ordinance. In this case, accessory structures are in approved use in the R one zone. Placing the accessory building as required by ordinance would not deny the landowner reasonable use of his property. There is an eight, there is eighty-five feet of rear yard on this property. Well placement and septic locations would not interfere with the placement of a detached accessory structure in compliance with the ordinance requirements. The second factor is that the landowner's problem is due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. In this case, the property is a hundred and eighty-two feet in depth, and the house was placed forty-eight feet from the right of way, leaving eighty feet, eighty-five feet of rear yard. Majority of the lots in this development are three-fourths of an acre to an acre in size, and there is a small grove of trees across the rear property line. The third factor is that the variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. That is a factor used to consider whether the resulting structure would be out of scale, out of place, or otherwise inconsistent. Every lot in the Hidden Haven Country Club Estates has a ten-foot drainage and utility easement following their perimeters. There are other accessory buildings in rear yards throughout this development, however, none of them required a variance for placement. And the proposed accessory building placement is to the rear of the house, and in combination with the existing tree cover, the accessory building would not be visible from the front right of way. On July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, the planning commission held a public hearing, which there was no public comment. After a review of the application material and a discussion, the planning commission by a six to zero vote recommended denial of the variance request due to the lack of practical difficulty tests being met. City council should review the request, consider the planning commission's formal recommendation, and approve or deny the request to reduce the front, the rear yard setback, excuse me, from ten feet to five feet for the placement of an accessory structure as presented in the two versions of the resolution.
So does he?
Thank you, Aaron.
I'll open up the, this, I make a motion to grant the variance, just open the discussion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Does he plan on taking out all those trees in the back?
No. In fact, his application suggested that the trees, by moving it back five feet, would, would help better hide it in the trees.
So I'm just trying to kind of picture. You ain't got a laser or anything, do you? So we could kind of.
Well, he's got a cursor on the screen, right?
So this is the proposed location of the structure. You can see it straddling that ten-foot drainage and utility easement line by five, five feet, which is also the same distance as the, the setback required by zoning code, the ten feet.
Okay, one of my questions, because I've seen an issue, is is he leaving enough space in the back to maintain that shed? So, I mean, he doesn't build it right too close, and then you gotta do roof work, or the back of the shed looks like crap. Without trespassing on his neighbor's property, can he maintain this thing?
Well, with the ten-foot setback, he certainly could. Here's a picture of the rear yard with staked out proposal location. As you can see, there's a dense, there's dense coverage, but there's also a fence. His rear yard neighbor is the golf course.
There'd be five feet between the back of it and the fence.
Right, however, if we needed to get in and do drainage, utility, or easement work, his shed is going to be in the way. Typically.
So how do we deal with it then, so he understands if we have to get in there and do that work, that we can do it? How, how does that shake out here?
Well, the city can do whatever it wants with that, destroy it, and there's nothing he can do about it.
Put something in the variance to say that if.
He would have to move it if need be. Yeah, yeah, it would be smart if he would move it before the city went in.
So when we have people who apply for a fence permit, if you will, and they want to put a fence in the drainage and utility easement, we let them know right up front that although we're not going to prohibit this, if work needs to be done, your fence will be removed, and the city's not going to spend the money to put your fence back, because we don't allow building in the drainage and utility easement, just for that purpose alone. Now, the fence that's in the backyard is actually, I believe it's the golf course's fence, and it's on their, their property line. And then the easement was put in ten feet into all of the properties on the other side of the fence when the, the subdivision was, was platted. You can see the ten-foot easement all the way around his parcel of property here.
If it were just because our ordinance set a ten-foot setback, I wouldn't be in favor of denying this, if that's all it was, because I went out there, and it's not going to bother the golf course if it's five feet closer to that fence. It's not going to bother any neighbors or anybody else. It's just, that's what our ordinance says. But the fact that it's an easement made, made the difference for me then, because the, the logic works the other way, too. It's not going to enhance his property if it's five feet closer to his house than it would be if it's five feet further away. So it's like, why, why do it? So I, I see the planning commission's point of view on it.
Well, they voted to accept it, correct?
Deny.
Or deny it, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see their point of view.
Well, if we put the stipulation in the variance so that they understand if something has to happen, that we can do it, who, who cares?
It would be our cost to move it at the time when it needs to be moved.
Well, yeah.
And then it's his responsibility to put it back if he wants to. I don't know if we can bill for that removal.
Oh, it's. Community development director is, is correct. By granting the variance, you are increasing the city's costs as well as, you know, the difficulties of having to essentially go on what was initially empty land and now remove an accessory structure to, to do your drainage and or utility work.
But if we put it in there and he understands, kind of like when we licensed the properties over on Front Street, okay, you can put this, your septic here, and we're going to let you use this driveway or this piece of property, this little piece here is an access, but if we want it, we want it back. Now, if we go and grant this variance and say, okay, but here's the deal. If we have to move this for utilities, you pay for it, we don't.
I think you could write that as a condition.
I think so.
You know, throw it out there to them.
You, you could do that. The only open question is whether that's a reasonable amount, and I don't think you can impose any sum upon the property owner, so that could be a dispute issue. So that would be the only open question that you would not be able to resolve. It'd be nice to be able to put in a condition that whatever the city's costs are, the landowner cannot dispute and has to accept it. We can certainly try to put that language in, and I would suggest we do. But I just also want to be clear with this council and, and, and future elected officials as well as staff that that one may not be as enforceable. But the ability, obviously, to remove and impose the costs on the property owner would be an enforceable condition.
Well, you know, we, we talk all the time about not just plain and simply their grant or deny a variance. And I recall a conversation where we said, well, you know, it's not just that black and white. You can put stipulations in there to these variances, so where you can control it. And if they don't want to do that, well, that's a different story. But at least if we give them the option, say, look, you know, we're willing to do this, however, this is the situation we're running into. Are you willing to work with the city on it, or do we just plain deny it?
I mean, I can, I can understand the, the planning commission doesn't find practical difficulty. There's, in order to grant a variance, he doesn't have a practical difficulty.
Yeah.
Number two, if he says, no, you can't come onto my property, but we can go in there on the ten-foot easement, I don't know how we move his shed if we're not trespassing, when we have a right to be in the easement, but his shed's in the easement.
How big a shed?
Thirty-two by sixteen.
Thirty-two by sixteen.
Are, are the trees really in the way if it was moved five feet? That's, because that, that was where I was potentially seeing practical difficulties, but that photo doesn't seem where the, the trees would be impacted whatsoever.
No.
So I'm not seeing anything geographically that is helping out a practical difficulties. It's more of a wish and a, and a preference rather than essentially a necessity or a near necessity.
Yeah, I, I see this as a want and not a need. The, the point of having a variance is I would like to have a second garage. It's allowable by code, but because of these practical, practical difficulties, I cannot fall into line with the rules. So I'm asking you, because of these reasons, these practical difficulties, can I have an exception? And I, and I don't see that here.
Well, how about the pool down on Cooper Lake?
So variances are supposed to be evaluated case by case without precedent.
So where, where was, where was the problems with the one on Cooper Lake? That, I mean, if we had to hold up and say why we granted it, why'd we grant it? There wasn't, you could have, you know, that was kind of a want.
Didn't grant it, that was as it was initially requested. But they made changes.
He worked with the city. He came into compliance as much as he could.
Yeah.
And that was my reasoning, because it was eighteen, eighteen feet versus.
To a semi-permanent or movable solution, which was, I thought, a very ingenious solution for it.
Not to, not to skew your decisions, but the next two cases, you're going to see some extreme practical difficulty, so we'll be examples.
All right, well, you got to try.
Yeah, I mean, I wanted to advocate, but when I saw the easement, it's like, okay, well. And he's got eighty-five feet of backyard, so it's not like it's.
So why can't he move it? Five feet or, what, what's the easement? How, how big a?
Ten feet, which also matches the, the setback. Ten feet, ten feet, they overlook each other.
Why can't he just move it?
He can, and we told him when he initially applied that his placement would have to be ten feet from the fence, and he said, what can I do? I need a variance. So here we are today.
Okay.
Well, no, I mean, he can move it that much. It's not like there's something in his way, I guess.
No. I looked at it from best I could see, and I couldn't see how it would make much dimes worth of difference one way or the other, to tell you the truth. But anyway, do we have a motion to do?
Mr. Mayor, the motion was to approve, so either the motion can be withdrawn, and the second withdrawn, or you can take a vote on approval.
Well, to save time, I'll withdraw it.
Okay.
You have to withdraw the second?
Yeah, who, who seconded?
Kevin did. According to my notes.
I withdraw it, too.
Hello.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm kind of tired.
We're back to square one.
Not my usual snappy self. All right, so in that case, do we have a motion to deny the variance? Go ahead.
We'll make a motion approving resolution number twenty twenty-four dash five one, a resolution denying a variance for the reduction of the rear yard setback from ten feet to five feet for the placement of an accessory structure on property located at twenty seventy-three eight Tyler Street Northeast as follows.
Very well enunciated, Mr. Mundell. Do we have, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of the motion as enunciated by Mr. Mundell? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard. Next item on the agenda. Mr. Berg talking about two hundred sixty-three University Avenue Extension Northeast, a variance for a structure placement.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, the city received a variance application from Paulo Fanchi for the placement of a detached accessory structure closer to the street than the primary structure due to wetland restrictions on his property. Fanchi's property is located in a rural residential zoning district of the city. According to the zoning code, no accessory buildings or private detached garages shall be located nearer the front line of the principal building than when the lot is three acres or greater, and the existing building is located two hundred feet from the front lot line. The accessory building or detached garage then may be closer to the front lot line than the principal dwelling. This property is five point three seven acres with the primary structure setback a hundred and twenty-five feet from the front lot line. This request does not meet the criteria set forth to, for the structure to be placed closer to the road, so a variance would be required for the placement of this structure. The applicant's property is over five acres in size, however, nearly two acres are wetland or lowlands that extend from the northeast corner of the lot diagonally to the south property line, which is, I will bring that up here in a second. Section sixty-six two fifty-five requires that the minimum building and setback distance from a septic system would be twenty-five feet, as well as the wetland edge. Additionally, this variance request is only for the placement in front of the primary residence. And according to section forty-four dash seven B two, the front yard setback distance for structural placement is forty feet. Therefore, if a variance for placement in front of the primary structure is approved, the detached accessory structure would still need to be forty feet from the front yard setback. The consideration of variance requires a three-factor test of practical difficulty. The first factor is a test of reasonableness, which means that the landowner would likely use their property in a practical way, but cannot do so under the rules of the ordinance. In this case, accessory structures are a permitted accessory use in a rural residential zoning district. The septic system is located on the north side of the primary residence. The second factor is that the landowner's problem is due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. In this case, the property is over five acres in size, however, nearly two acres are wetlands that extend from the northeast corner of the lot diagonally to the south property line. And wetland setbacks require a twenty-five foot setback from the delineated wetland edge. The third factor is that the variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. In this case, the accessory structure would be used for general storage, allowing for personal property to not be visible from adjoining properties or the city right of way as required by section twenty-four dash three A. And standing tree growth, stand, standing tree growth between the property, between the proposed detached accessory structure and the front property line would screen it from view of the public right of way. On July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, the planning commission held a public hearing, which there was no public comment. After a review of the application material and discussion, the planning commission by a six to zero vote recommended approval of the variance for the placement of a detached accessory structure nearer the front line than the primary structure. City council should review the request, consider the planning commission's formal recommendation, and approve the variance as presented in twenty twenty-four dash forty-nine. I will bring up the wetland overview for you, for your information. As you can see, this, there's nearly two acres of wetland running right down the middle of the property. The applicant would love to place the structure behind the front of the house, but just cannot do so because of the wetland.
Yeah. Thank you, Aaron. Anybody want to make a motion so we can discuss? Or, and/or approve?
Make a motion that we approve this.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion?
I think, Aaron, you're correct. This one is pretty unique.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a, there's a little bit of property maybe on the other side of the wetland, but for him to get to it would be nearly impossible as well without driving through his front yard and over his septic system. So he doesn't really have any other choice.
Yeah.
He's on five acres, right?
Correct. But if you take out the wetland, he's really on three.
That's fine. Ball, ball for the ball. Looking at the pictures here, but I.
Okay, so a motion has been made to grant the variance, which is to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash forty-nine. Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard. Once more, we call upon the intrepid Mr. Berg on another variance, twenty-three seven eighty-five Marmon Street Northeast.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On June sixth, twenty twenty-four, the city received a variance application from Carl Mitchell, owner of two three seven eight five Marmon Street Northeast, to reduce the side yard setback standard from twenty-five feet to ten feet on the south property line for the placement of a detached accessory structure. Excuse me, the applicant's property. Excuse me. The applicant's property is located in the Meadows of Fish Lake subdivision in a rural residential zoning districts where accessory structures are an approved accessory use. The property is recorded at one point four five acres in size and would be permitted one detached accessory structure at the maximum square footage of fifteen hundred and twenty square feet. According to section forty-two seven B one C, the side yard setbacks in the rural residential zoning district is twenty-five feet. This request for a reduction to the setback is due to grade and existing elevations on the property. When the Meadows of Fish Lake subdivision was graded by the developer in two thousand and five, home sites were raised in order to achieve walkout basement elevations. Mitchell's property has an eight-foot elevation difference between the front of the house and the rear yard. Due to elevation changes, a terrace boulder wall was constructed to support the driveway and parking pad, which limit the buildable area available in the side yard. Additionally, the septic system is located in the southeast corner of the property, uh, of the rear yard, limiting the depth of the lot area available for the detached accessory structure placement. In order to meet septic setbacks of ten feet, as well as the zoning requirements, which states that no building, uh, or detached garage may be located nearer the front line than the principal building, a side yard setback reduction might be necessary. The Meadows of Fish Lake subdivision was platted with a ten-foot drainage and utility easement on side yard property lines of all lots. For maintenance, drainage, and utility placement factors, the city does not permit the placement of structures in drainage and utility easements. The consideration of a variance requires the three-factor test of practical difficulty. The first factor is a test of reasonableness, which means the landowner would likely use the property in a practical way, but cannot do so under the rules of the ordinance. In this case, detached accessory structures are an approved accessory use in the rural residential zoning districts. The second factor is that the landowner's problem is due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. In this case, elevations on the property limit the area for construction of an accessory structure. The zoning regulations restrict placement of accessory structures in the front yard, and the rear yard, uh, location of the septic system limits the depth of, of, in the lot available to build. The third factor is that the variance would not alter essential character of the neighborhood. In this case, there are multiple detached accessory structures throughout the Meadows of Fish Lake development. The accessory structure will be used for general storage, allowing for personal property to not be visible to adjoining properties or the city right of way, as required by city ordinance. By maintaining a ten-foot drainage and utility easement distance throughout the development, the proposed structure would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. On July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, the planning commission held a public hearing, which there was no public comment. After a review of the application material, a discussion, and hearing from the applicant, the planning commission, by a five to one vote, recommended approval of the variance request to reduce the side yard setback standard from twenty-five feet to ten feet along the south property line at two three seven eight five Marmon Street for the placement of a detached accessory structure. City council should review the request, consider the planning commission's formal recommendation, and approve the variance request to reduce the side yard setback from twenty-five to ten feet on the south property line for the placement of a detached accessory structure as presented in resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty.
Thank you, Aaron.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance for two three seven eight five Marmon Street Northeast, resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there a discussion?
I was out at these three properties today, and this one is definitely something else with them walls of boulders. It's like, man.
Yeah, I have a photo here, Jim, if you wanna.
Oh, it's crazy. I know, I've seen that. I'm like, and then you can see the mound system's back there. So it's like, he's got no room. Lot of big rocks. That's all I got.
How big was this again? Fifteen hundred square feet?
Um, that's, he can do fifteen twenty. He's proposed. Let me see, I have a drawing here. Uh, thirty-two by forty-five, but the corner's clipped out of it, so it'll be twelve hundred square feet. He'd be allowed, I think, twelve fifty. When the, uh, building permit application comes in, we'll tackle the square footage. This is just for purposes of, can he put it in that location?
Where's he propose to put a driveway to it?
Especially with the boulders there.
Yeah, so he, uh, he's in the rural residential, so he can have a second driveway. Um, so he'll be able to come off of Marmon Street, right through the property here, five feet from, ooh, excuse me, wrong.
I'm sure his neighbors wouldn't mind.
Sorry. So then, um, the neighbor's, uh, septic mound is actually just to the right in the picture. So that's not usable land for the neighbor either. Um, the property line is between the fence and this tall grass is the actual property line. Um, and you can see the yellow flags way back here in the backyard. That's gonna be the edge of the garage. It'll extend over to this part of the garage with that L shape here, and he'll be able to drive right, uh, to the garage um, along this, right here. You can see where they're kind of using an approach already for construction purposes. He'll be parking or getting to the garage right back here. Coming off of this elevated driveway, there'd be no way for him to make a second turn to come off of there without, uh, a steep incline. That's an eight-foot difference in elevation, so he'll probably have to come in off of here. And he'll have to apply for a driveway permit to get that approval.
Any further discussion? Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor of approving? Let me read it again. Approving resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty. Resolution granting this variance. Say aye.
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 Opposed. None heard. Thanks, Aaron.
You bet.
On our agenda, that moves us into department reports under community development again. Getting our mileage out of Mr. Berg tonight. Uh, item A, community development, point one, rezoning R two to B two, West Highway sixty-five, Klondike Drive, the two hundred and seventh Ave, Northeast.
One second to get this folder open. All right, here we go. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item was discussed at the March eleventh, twenty twenty-four council work meeting with staff direction to explore the requirements to initiate rezoning to include Met Council requirements, public hearings, and possible comp plan amendments. City staff have received, uh, requests from two zero four five four Highway sixty-five, the former Hunter's Inn, for a rezoning of the property in order to facilitate the sale of the property. This property, although once in active commercial use in a residential zone, has been disconnected for longer than three hundred and sixty-five days, which makes it a nonconformity, uh, but it does lose its nonconforming status after the discontinued use. Um, additionally, city staff have responded to zoning information requests from thirteen fifty-one Klondike Drive Northeast, which is also on the market. Uh, it is a corner lot, and it may have more value as a commercial parcel rather than a residential parcel due to its proximity to Highway sixty-five.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yes.
Is that open land right now, or is there a structure on?
Yes. Yep, it is open.
It's open, okay. Thank you.
Yep. These two properties are located in a larger hundred and twenty-acre, uh, section zone, single-family and townhome residential, which stretches from Klondike Drive Northeast to the area of two hundred and seventh Avenue Northeast. Although there are two single-family residential parcels, um, within this zone, it contains the thirty-five acre, over thirty-five acre, you pull our parts salvage yard, which is, was approved as a conditional use permit on July seventeenth of nineteen ninety-six, when this zone was originally a B two zone. In summary, and according to Anoka County Tax Assessor Alex Guggenberger, as long as the existing use of a property remains the same, the tax classification would also remain the same. Tax classification is how a property is assessed and not the underlying city zoning designation. The property's zoning designation might change, but that would not change its actual tax classification. The underlying zoning classification helps determine the highest and best use of a property from an evaluation perspective. If a rezoning were to be approved, the two residences located in the area would be allowed to remain as residential use located in a commercial zone and taxed residential. The rezoning would also create a continuous commercial zone on the west side of Highway sixty-five from Sims Road in the north, south to a hundred and ninety-seventh, the mixed-use zone, uh, in the sod fields. Um, Eric Wojcik, the city's Met Council sector representative, was consulted and does not believe that the Met Council would be opposed to a rezoning of the area as it's currently outside of our MUSA area. Uh, in review of the twenty forty, uh, comp plan, commercial industrial development is allowed within the future growth area, and his recommendation was provided that each site could be supported by a viable septic system.
Is that, is that, did you mean to use septic there? Is that interchangeable with sewer? Or was that specifically a?
So this would be outside of.
SSTS.
This, yeah, this would be outside of the Met Council boundary, so would not have access to the sewer and water system.
Okay.
Um, so this would be required to be on its own well and separate, uh, at this point until if, when future expansion happens. That's why it's in the future use area instead of the MUSA area. Um, an amendment to the text of the chapter of the zoning code or change in boundaries or designation on the official zoning map, it must be initiated by a simple majority of the city council. Staff are, are requesting the city council, as required by ordinance, provide a formal direction to staff to take the steps necessary to rezone this area from single-family and townhome residential to central business B two district in order to better align the use of this area with the city's overall goals.
Thanks, thanks again.
Yeah, I'll open it up. I'll make a move to approve it, just for just to open up the discussion.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve. Discussion?
Now, is this all being done, you know, I, I have, what I have a problem with is you got two separate people that are requesting it be changed. And is this gonna be a build it and they, be done on build it and they will come? Or, because you're saying that would initially be on well and septic. And so what happens? I still would like to see the specs on the pipes, because I know what we were told back in twenty eleven about the sewer water and the pipe that was put in there. And we've had this discussion before. We were told that it was not big enough to handle. Whoop, lost my rubber. Um, it wasn't big enough to handle that much. And the only reason that we ran the force main to begin with was to decommission Whispering Aspen and at that time Castle Towers, because that system up there was failing. And so are we doing it because you've got two people that own property wanna change the zoning so they can maybe sell it? And I guess what I'm looking out for kind of is, so they put in their well and septic, all of a sudden sewer water goes past there. Are they gonna be forced to hook up?
Yes.
And are they gonna be made aware of it when they buy it or when they go to sell it that, hey, you can, you got sewer well here now? But there is plans to put sewer water up here, utilities, and then you're gonna have to hook up? What, what kind of a, quite murder?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeRoche, um, we've brought this up to the engineer already, Craig Yocum, and, uh, he is confident there's capacity in that line to, uh, to feed this area, the sewer line. Um, as, as everyone recalls, we're kinda going to legislature asking for, uh, dollars on the water component side of it. Um, so this is kind of a, in preparation of, because I think the argument's gonna be a little stronger at the state legislature to say, we've already rezoned this, ready for, you know, this ask, so to speak.
So I did put, uh, I put the wetland overlay, so the area we're talking about is, uh, right here, south of Johnson Street. Uh, back here, encompassing the salvage yard. And then choices are, there's, there's a house here. The same owner owns the ten acres back here, but then that corner parcel is right here, which is mostly underwater. In terms of residential density, if we were to leave it residential, uh, there's not much territory here to build homes, to connect to the system. Um, this may be better off suited as one or two businesses than to try and put multiple connections into the system because of the wetlands that are located on the property. In addition to the fact that there's a thirty-acre salvage yard there that's never probably gonna go away or be cleaned up, th- this makes, there, there would be very limited connections, uh, there if and when sewer and water was available there. Um, because of its current use, it's been, it's been that salvage yard, like I said, since I think ninety-six. I don't foresee that changing. They're very heavily invested in that location, so.
With Johnson Street, back around twenty twelve, twenty eleven, we called that the road to nowhere, because.
The one going north?
Right, I mean, we, we have.
Dead ends both directions.
Yeah.
We have the rights to the property alongside that road because there was plans of putting residential in there. And that was kind of another fang day.
This, uh, this twenty-ish acres is zoned, um, higher density residential on this side, and this is zoned commercial. Uh, these, we've had numerous conversations with the landowner about.
Was that Kurt Stramlin?
No, this is, um, used to be Cambridge State Bank. They've now sold ownership to some other bank, First Bank and Trust or something up in Cambridge.
Yep.
Um, but they still own the land. It's an, it's a, it's an investment group of the bank. Um, this, without sewer and water, will probably never be developed unless you put one townhome on here, uh, and then ghost plat the rest of it, waiting for sewer and water to come in, which may never happen because of the way it's platted right now. So we're running into the same scenario down here. This is platted for townhouses or higher-density residential, but we can't accommodate that because there's no ability to connect to sewer and water. But according to the Met Council making a transition to business or industry um, in the future, uh, use or future growth area, they wouldn't get in the way of the city doing that.
Well, of course not. We're out of that area now anyway, and God only knows when that's ever gonna develop. I mean, yeah, whatever. I mean, I, I've, I've been looking in, looking at this stuff for, since twenty eleven. And I know what was proposed, I know what was told to us, and I know the reasoning behind doing what we did. And I guess high-density housing, isn't that gonna bring more than a business as far as connections and flowage and?
It certainly would. I don't know if anybody's gonna rent something next to a salvage yard, but maybe.
Well, at one point, the salvage yard, people wanted to buy Hunter's Inn property, and they tried to get a variance to come in from the north, and they were denied. And that wasn't that, quite that long ago.
There's, there's other underlying easement issues with the Hunter's Inn property that we won't need to get into tonight. But they've got some things that they would have to, um, take care of if they purchased that property. And that's a, a private easement with a utility company, so. There are some hurdles yet, even if this property is rezoned for that to become something. And it would be even a bigger hurdle if it was a apartment complex or a townhouse complex.
Well, I mean, I understand where you're coming from. I just have a problem with somebody coming in saying, hey, I got this piece of property. You wanna rezone it so I can sell it? Well, it'd be kinda nice if everybody could do that, but that doesn't happen.
So we looked at, um, ice, in isolation, just rezoning Hunter's Inn as a business. We ran that by the city attorney. We thought that spot zoning may be applied to that scenario, uh, because it's surrounded by a hundred and twenty-six acres of residential, but you're gonna change one parcel to commercial just for one occupant or one parcel could be looked at as spot zoning, although there is a B two zone right across the street, so potentially maybe not. But, um, we take direction from you guys, and if you, uh, see this as something helpful, we, we would move forward on it. If, if you have reservations, we would also then put an end to it tonight if that's your, if that's your desire.
Oh, I have a feeling everybody else is in favor, and I'm not gonna vote against everybody else. I mean, might as well be united on that front.
Yeah, we still have to hold a public hearing. I guarantee you, we're gonna hear from both of the occupied residences there. They're gonna be worried specifically about their taxes and how they're gonna be assessed. That's why I reached out to the county immediately before we even moved forward, uh, to be. before we even moved forward, uh, to be ready for that potential, uh, question, uh, when it, when it arises. I don't suspect You Pull Our Parts is gonna complain, they have a conditional use permit, so it doesn't matter what we change their zoning to, they're gonna also be assessed for commercial property under a conditional use permit. So, uh, there's some ag land here on the north end that will continue to be assessed as ag land, as bare. The residences will remain residential taxed, and then that commercial corner, although it's currently a, uh, being, being, um, taxed as potential commercial or potential residential bear land development, it'll change to commercial bear land development, so...
I'm surprised the question hasn't come up, what about the east side of sixty-five in the same stretch?
It's already zoned B-two.
It is?
It's already zoned that way.
Oh, okay.
That's Sharon Johnson's property, isn't it, on the east side?
Yeah, right, right here in this bottom corner, I don't know if you can see my mouse.
Yeah, but that's strange, that has, that has a, an odd zoning to it. It was like highway business, is what I recall.
Yeah, so if you look up and down the corridor...
What does that mean, that's...
That's our, that's our more like fast food restaurant, um, uh, car wash, uh, you name it, the kind of things that you see along the main highway. Um, if you look up and down, and I'm trying to get, uh, a better picture here, um, for you, uh, there's a flip-flop pretty much up and down between highway commercial and B, and B-two, which is our central business. Well, ha, so if it's a forty-acre parcel, half is one and half is the other, but then the next forty acres is flip-flopped the other way, I don't know, we, we were creative when we were rezoning, I guess, I don't know.
I guess.
I'll show you what I mean here.
Well, originally, when the sewer water came in, the estimates were nineteen thousand connections between the south end of the sewer water district and two, two-forty-first. And if we keep... Doing that and not, well, or re... Rezoning, we're cutting back on our residential, our density that was originally planned in there to take up some of the sewer water connections and the flowage, because when the thing first came in, Craig Yocum was the one that said, if we didn't get more, we, we were gonna have to backflush seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons every month into that pond that's down by the water tower. Just to keep everything circulating. And so, I mean, I, maybe he changes mine, I don't know. I haven't seen any current data, but...
Mr. Mayor, just two thoughts that I had on this. You know, first of all, I think it's important to have a healthy balance between residential and commercial industrial, and this is a, kind of a, a downstroke in the commercial-industrial part after we've approved two rather large housing projects. But the second thing is, is just having housing adjacent Highway sixty-five, I think, is the noise associated with highways and that generally will, you know, spawn a sound wall or something like that, which is very expensive to put up to try and mitigate the sound. So I don't know that that necessarily is the best in terms of planning and zoning, uh, to locate housing directly next to highways. But, but having service roads and accessing businesses and the commercial tax base and jobs that come off of that, I think are, um, are a good plan, so...
I concur. Any further discussion?
And just, correct me if I'm wrong, but by doing this, we also put ourselves in a stronger position when we are lobbying for the twelve million to get the water tower and the school service.
So, yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, one of the, uh, things that came out of the discussion I had with Met Council was that they, they need more flow into their, to make their, uh, plant operate more efficiently. They believe that a commercial-industrial park would create that additional flow, and they're very receptive to that, and they're willing to help lobby for the water component that we need, um, provided the sewer is, has the capacity, the water component that we need, uh, to provide the water and sewer to, to that development, so... It's one more, having this done is one more step to, you know, to, um, essentially creating a, a, the scenario where people think it's a viable project, so...
Yeah, continuity.
Yep.
Well, we've got a motion to...
Motion seconded in discussion, so we're done.
Yeah, but did, did we have a motion to, 'cause the city staff was requesting that the city council, as required by city ordinance, provide formal direction to staff to take the steps necessary to rezone this area from single-family and townhome residential R-two to central business B-two district? Was that part of the motion?
Yeah, that's kind of the same...
I think there was a generalized motion to approve.
Okay.
Ma, Mayor, um, there was a motion and a second, I think it should be very clear that the council is not approving a rezoning, it is approving staff to engage in the necessary steps and processes. So you will still have an opportunity to more thoroughly investigate whether rezoning is, is appropriate, you'll have to go through Planning Commission, there'll have to be a public hearing, and then I'll have to come before this body again for an actual rezoning approval pursuant to the staff report. Um, Metropolitan Council also may have, uh, a say in this whole process as well.
Well, that being said, I'll amend my motion to add everything the attorney said.
No, it, it's all in the staff report, so...
Okay, all that said, thank you, City Attorney Larson. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none heard. Uh, next item on the agenda is city administrator set fall town hall meeting dates, or date, I should say.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the following dates here are available, um, after checking with, uh, the schedules of our school district partners and other, uh, commissions and committees out there right now. Uh, and so this would be after the election, after things somewhat settled down a little bit, and, uh, and these dates would be available, so if there's a preference or if there's a desire to look at calendars to see, based on availability, uh, we can certainly, um, go with one of these and, uh, start the process of getting that set up.
Okay, my first choice is November twentieth, Wednesday. Does that work for anybody else?
I'm good with that.
I'm good.
I think I was good with everything except the twenty-seventh.
Not you, Bob?
What date?
Wednesday, the twentieth of November.
Yeah, that's fine, that's a couple months up.
Okay.
Unfortunately, my week of deer hunting, I won't be available.
What was that?
That's, that's my, my week off for deer hunting season, so I won't be available.
Going to Wisconsin?
Yeah, good.
Okay, well, looks like November twentieth will work for everybody then. Wednesday, November twentieth for the fall town hall meeting.
At six o'clock? They usually start at six, I believe.
I'm not sure if it's six, six or seven, but one of the two, we'll send out a...
I, I think we start at six and come in the chambers at seven.
Yeah, we meet in the senior center first for an hour, yeah. Brian's right.
No, uh, Wisconsin deer hunting is November twenty-three to December first, so you're available.
So much for that attempt. Are there any sta, other staff reports or council reports?
Yeah, somebody lost a set of keys by the boat landing on the county park side, and the lanyard that was on there, it's wrapped around the post, so if you dropped your keys in the water, somebody found them with their feet, brought them up, put them on the dock, and there they sit, so...
Anybody still rowing out there in the middle of the lake?
Maybe.
Might be theirs.
Maybe.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just have a couple of updates, I wanted to, I think you already touched on it, the Coon Lake Beach Park dedication, um, it was a great dedication, a lot of people showed up.
Yeah, quite a few.
Maggie, um, which made it into the newsletter, actually made a showing there, so she came by in my, my yellow lab, and, uh, all the kids seemed to enjoy her as well, so...
Oh, yeah.
She comes to some of these things periodically, it's, it's an odd thing, but can't always count on her, but... The other thing is, uh, is we're working on, uh, a capstone development agreement, I know that everyone was very interested in that document because it kind of identifies what we're gonna require the developer to do. Aaron's been working hard on that, we've been meeting with them, and, uh, that'll be...
And we're sticking to our ten-foot setbacks on the side, sidelines?
According to the plan, yes.
So, uh...
That's one I'm watching.
We'll, we'll be providing that to you, uh, to Mayor and Council for review of that, uh, when that becomes available. We had absentee voting here on Saturday, uh, two staff members, uh, were here, uh, manning that, and one person came in for absentee, so, um, while the state thought that was critical, I'm not sure that it totally is, but, uh, we, we met the requirement and we were here for that. So thank you to Carrie, and I don't know who, um, it might have been Emily who was here.
Emily, probably.
Um, and then just wanna remind everybody, uh, to vote tomorrow, uh, it's gonna be a busy, busy day for the primary vote tomorrow.
And as Carrie, as I checked with Carrie earlier, all three precincts are open in East Bay.
Yep, so, um, everyone make sure to get out and vote, and, uh, I know our area, northern Anoka County, I think we have ninety-five percent or something like that, people show up to vote, it's phenomenal, it's off the charts compared to, um, what other areas do, and, uh, and so a lot of people take it very seriously, as well they should, so, uh, I wanna remind everybody of that, but aside from that, that concludes my report, unless there's questions.
Very good.
I had something else, I can't, just give me a second.
Well, I wanted to point out that, like the mayor and, um, Matt here discussed, uh, the Coon Lake Beach, that was a project that was heavily influenced by our residents. They got to pick out the equipment, and, uh, it looks great, I couldn't make that, but I've been by since, and, uh, it just goes to show what we can do when we work together in these neighborhoods.
That's it.
That's our Coon Lake.
Yep.
That is a very tight-knit community.
Yep. No, it really looks great, I'm not, I'm not as blown away. Anything else before we adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard.